And then.
Part of their civil plans. I'll just quickly move through these. This is something that will be looked at in greater detail by the county engineer. From basically from here on through to final approval. Here's a this, let's see here. I may have to bring up the new civil plan. So there's a couple pages that were updated. So let me go to a new share and. Look at the possibility of getting. Okay. See if I can get into here. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scroll through to that page we left off on. Maybe it's a little slow. So here's the detail for the detention and retention pond. Can see what they've done here. They've. They've included the description of each pond and the general location within each lot. So the retain, the you'll notice the northern retention pond, that will be completely within lot two twenty two. The southwestern detention pond will be completely within lot two oh nine. I'll probably just go back to the. To the PowerPoint slide and go to staff's recommendation from here. So staff's recommendation for preliminary approval. For smart fields subdivision phase two. A total of 24 lots and this recommendation is based on the findings in the staff report. You can see the county engineer shall approve the final civil drawings. The owner of lot two oh nine is responsible for maintenance. So the retention pond. A storm water maintenance agreement is recorded and will run with the land. All of Smartfield's phase two is annexed into Central Weaver Sewer District. That concludes what I had to say today. There the developer called and is unable to make it today. So the developer is here.
Okay.
Dave, David LaLolli.
Okay. Do you have any questions for staff or for the developer?
I have just a question just out of curiosity on that. Nine where it was only an 80 foot. Width on the lot that was going to be left, right? How, what's the size of a home that is going to go on there? And is it consistent with what's in the rest of the development?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Like what are the plans for the size of homes that will be in this development? I guess is a simpler way of asking that.
Well, just looking at the neighbor, the lot two oh eight is 115 wide. If you take, take about 25 feet off of that. I think that's what you have to look with as far as width wise. So I think it'd be pretty comparable.
Okay.
So. I'm not sure if you were here for our pre meeting. I don't think you were here. So in, in looking at that, the retention pond over on lot two twenty two. We'd really like to have you look at putting that into a swell in the road. You know, go to a different street design, possibly if, if it can be engineered that way. Rather than have that retention pond running through that lot, through lot now two twenty two. But the length, pretty much the length of lot number two, 23, it looks like so.
Well, you'll have to get with planning to, you know, to look at how those are designed and how it would, you know, work with your engineering and all of that stuff. You know, I'd kind of refer to, to staff on that. Steve and I, I presume that's something that, that they can come in, speak with, with staff about.
Yeah, normally the cross section is, is reviewed by the county engineer, but there is some input from the planning division. And I think even the county commission, planning commission. So it's, it's basically like a low impact development, street cross section. And we'd have to, we'd have to be, the county engineer would really need to be on board with that. But that's something we can set up a meeting and work out, talk to him about.
Give us a statement. Dave LaLolli, Plain City, Utah. Do you mind address still?
Do we, do we still need the addresses? June.
You can just do.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you're good. Okay.
Um, yeah, we, we're open to that. And I think it would probably be a little better looking. And if it ran across the front of those lots rather than, and was a swell feature.
Right.
Uh, we were, I don't know, I was, I walked in while Felix was, was talking, but we were hoping to go to final. Does that, was that not what you were asking for? And then if we could get final with conditions upon these things, I think we've had several reviews. With engineering that even our engineers have answered. But that's probably a bigger change to change the. To change the intention of law.
So it sounds like the developer is actually despite what's on the agenda is requesting a final approval from you tonight. Our, our recommendation is just to stick with what's in the staff report, which is preliminary. We didn't feel comfortable doing both tonight.
And I agree. Sorry. That's, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll go through the step process.
It was just different than what we can talk about. So.
All right. Okay. Commissioners, any, any questions or comments or concerns?
I just wanted to comment the new draft that you have here with this retention pond on two, 23 or now two, 22. I personally feel like it's an improvement from the first drawing, like I feel like somebody will be in along the whole. Lot of somebody in there kind of, even though it's in the one person's lot, the neighbors kind of sharing that. I feel like they'll be more prone to take care of it. It's narrow. It's not right out there on the street. So I feel like that's an improvement. It's one of the.
Yeah. Well, and the idea behind it too is kind of thinking forward. Lot two, 22 may eventually be developed into a subdivision. So i- if it is, then they can just extend home that's there, you know, for their future development purposes.
Right. Yeah. Cause it. Right. Yeah. Cause it's what five and a half acres.
It is. Yep. Yep. And, and we just don't have a lot of room too in, with the slope of everything. Uh, so I think it's actually positioned in a really good spot because the road comes down from both angles from forty-three hundred in the back of the subdivision.
Well, and, and, and I think that the swell with the road design would even be better. Just kind of try to eliminate it altogether.
I think that would work.
These, these ponds are, I'm not, I, I understand and they do have to be there and I get it. It's not just because, I'm not thinking this way, just because I don't think we're ever going to get rain again, because I'm sure we will, and we don't expect it as usual. And we'll get a lot of it. So they have to be there. But. The problem is, is the ninety-nine percent of the time anymore with weather being the way it is, that it doesn't get used, that they're a mess.
Yeah.
And so anyway, okay, anything else? All right. Well, thank you. Okay, commissioners. I'll ask for a motion if somebody would like to. Go ahead with that and then we can have discussion after the motion. Unless you'd like to have discussion first.
Might also note that on condition two, where it mentions lot two oh nine, there's also lot two twenty-two. So there's some responsibilities for both those lots.
Right. Yeah. And leave this up because it's different than what's in the recommendations in our packet. So, yeah.
Listener channel, might have missed something here, but our packet, but they're calling twenty-three lot.
Four, because the plot two oh eight is now a lot.
Where it comes from. Okay. I guess I. Why not a senior moment there?
No, I think you're right. It, it says twenty-three in, in the staff recommendation. That was before we clarified or they did it right.
Yeah. So those, those changes have been made to what's on the screen here now.
So what kind of language then do, do we want to have in here? That it'll be something that we put in this motion, that if they can do that, approve them.
Final, yeah.
That's for lot two.
So.
Yeah, two twenty-two.
So is that. A condition that have to be, or is that just something we want to recommend that they look into?
Yeah. How, how do, how would we have to do that, Stephen or, or me?
Either one, you could do either one and we'll report back on it when we come to you before finally.
Okay. And if it's not feasible, then it's. The condition gets removed for final.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. I would say condition it, but.
I like that wording better. Just want to hold him up if it's just some, you know, it's just an idea that we're having here. So.
Any volunteers for a motion?
I'll try to make a motion. So. Okay. Um, I motioned that we accept the staff recommendation of the preliminary approval of smart field subdivision phase two. Um, for a total of twenty-four lots. Correct Felix, twenty-four and it's good. Okay. Based on the following conditions, the county engineering department shall approve the final civil drawings, lot two oh nine is combined with two oh eight. Um, the owner.
No.
Oh, no, sorry. Oh, that's true. Oh, thank you. Okay. The owner of lot two oh nine is responsible for the maintenance and the, of the retention pond, the storm water maintenance agreement is recorded and will run with the land. All of smart fields phase two is annexed into central Weaver sewer, sewer district. And that the developer considers the implement of a, whatever we call them.
Is it a road swell? What's the proper term, Stephen?
Yeah, road swell, low impact development, however you want to refer to that.
Yeah, with the road swell to replace the tension pond on two twenty-two.
All right. I have just one thing that you can add if you want to, the, the owner. If, if so, in case the road swell doesn't go through, the owner of lot two twenty-two is responsible as well for the maintenance of.
Oh, right. Yes. Okay. Yes. So add that. Yeah.
Okay. So if you're good with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. And any other friendly? Additions?
Yeah, then.
Okay. 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 So the recommendation is based on the proposed subdivision conforms to the West Central Weaver general plan. The proposed subdivision complies with the applicable county codes and the subdivision conforms to zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Very good. Okay. Have a motion. I'll ask second.
Second up.
Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Andrea.
Aye.
Commissioner Clontz.
Aye.
Commissioner Nava.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda. Item two point two LBS oh three, one, four, two, two, request for recommendation of final approval of Somerset farm space three. And we've excluded phase five, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, located in the A one zone at approximately twenty-three hundred south, thirty-six fifty west. Miss Tanner?
Thank you, commissioners. This is a, this is part, this is a lot average subdivision back in twenty nineteen. Uh, four phases came before you for preliminary approval. And just as an explanation, a little bit of background for the newer planning commissioners. A lot average subdivision allows for smaller lots than the zone minimum. As long as all of the lots average meets the zone minimum for both area and width. That makes sense? So this is in the A one zone. In your packet, you'll see a table of averages that is part of the requirement that they include that on their final plan. You can see that the average area and width for all of the proposed lots in phase three exceed the minimum of forty thousand square feet and a hundred fifty feet in width. Down here and show you a proposed plat here. This is their proposed plat. As you can see, they are proposing to continue a couple of previously dedicated county roads. This will be a cul-de-sac. It won't continue through. So when phase five comes up for approval. We have required, I want to back up for just a second. Actually, with the exclusion of phase five. It shouldn't affect any of the conditions of approval that you see in your staff report. We will still require those trail easements. To continue from phase three through phase five and connect to what, to the already reported phase four. So this is nine lots. They have received a final will serve letter from Taylor West Weaver for nine lots. Um, and Hooper irrigation has also given final approval for nine lots. They've actually given final approval for the other two. And you'll see that when that comes back before you. Um, annexation into central Weaver sewer, as far as I know, has already begun. Engineering will verify that that process is complete before they get onto a county commission agenda. These are where the preliminary conditions of approval. Um, as you can see, a couple of them down near the bottom are required before we schedule them for county commission approval. And then based on the findings in the staff report, uh, planning would recommend approval of this development based on the conditions found in the staff report. The developer is here. If you have any questions for them.
Tammy, will you just remind me how many lots we're looking at tonight?
Nine lots.
There was excluding two.
Correct.
Any questions for staff or the developer? All right. Tammy, just one question, and I, I'm sure that this is just kind of a. A, a typo maybe, but under the staff recommendations, the, it starts with seven, eight, nine. Is that?
That is just a formatting error on your staff report. Yeah. Apologize for that. That's a good question. You want to make sure you're not missing several other.
Right. That was the only reason I asked. I wanted to make sure that there wasn't something that might have gotten lost. So. I know how that cut and paste works. Or copy and paste.
I think is it continued on after the preliminary conditions of approval and continued the numbering instead of.
Okay. Okay. Listeners. Any questions or comments before we take a motion?
He's curious about the piping or fencing of the canal. Do we have a sense on which of those two that would be?
Uh, as far as I know, so far the developers opted to fence along the canal.
Hey, thanks.
So I have an additional question to piggyback off that. So is that, it says inherently you're. A scrub, when would that, if it, if it wasn't done now, when would that be completed?
So we require that all improvements either be installed or escrowed for, or a combination of both before we even schedule them for county commission approval.
Okay.
Great. And then, so the access, so just thinking forward to when we get our next application for phase five. So the access is here in the cul-de-sac. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
So is that portion of the canal, I'm, I'm presuming there's a portion of that canal that's going to be. Covered or billed or.
Or piped. That is the assumption the developer, the developer can probably answer that more precisely for you if you'd like.
But, but for this phase, it's not necessary. So it would just be fencing, but. Before it gets to fencing, probably phase five will be in front of us.
Yes.
I'm assuming.
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm okay with that. Commissioners of, you have any concerns or? Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. This is final approval on. Five, without five.
Out five, yeah, just phase three.
Good enough. Okay. Um, I'll make a recommendation. We make final approval of Somerset farm phase three. LBS. Zero, three, one, four, four, two. Consisting of nine lots located at approximately twenty-three hundred south, thirty-six fifty west, Ogden, Utah. Recommendation is subject to all review agency requirements, including any requirements from the Wilson Canal Company. And the following conditions. Prior to scheduling for final approval of county commission, improvements must be installed or escrowed. For improvements must be received along with a signed improvement agreement. Fence must be installed along canal or. Wilson Canal or the canal must be piped. I guess if required by the Wilson Canal Company. If not installed, it must be escrowed with other improvements. A pathway easement must be shown on the final plat twice at phase three. And I guess that includes five from the cul-de-sac temporary turnaround easement. Southeast across the canal to content, to connect with the pathway. In phase four, this requirement. Of one oh six dash one dash five pathways and sidewalk layout shall provide for the continuation of existing pathways or sidewalks. There is a pathway stub from the south. The recommendation is based on the following findings provide. The proposed subdivision conforms to the Western Weber County general plan. The proposed subdivision complies with the applicable county ordinances.
Very good. I'll ask for a second to that motion. A second. Motion in a second. Commissioner Nava.
Aye.
Commissioner Andy.
Buddy. Aye.
Commissioner Clontz.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number two point three conditional use permit. Two oh two, two dash oh nine, request for approval of a contractor's equipment storage yard in the Weber industrial area located in the M one zone. At twenty-two forty-one Rulon White Boulevard.
Thank you, commissioners. This is a request for a conditional use permit. Um, for a landscaping company to store some of their contractors' equipment. Just to orient you, this is located off of twenty-three fifty north and Rulon White Boulevard in the Weber Industrial Center. I will tell you that contractor equipment storage is a permitted use, permitted conditional use, I guess, in the M one zone. Got a site plan for you here. You're going to see some of the writing upside down. I wanted to orient it north. So when you're looking at it ahead, you'll see that they are proposing. A small area over in the northwest corner of their property. They've got several existing businesses here. And, you know, just to kind of touch on the history that was given in the pre-meeting. This applicant has worked very closely with code enforcement to bring this parcel into compliance and get it cleaned up. Uh, staff feels, and you'll see this in their staff report, they're not proposing any structures. I believe the applicant has mentioned putting some gravel down in discussions with engineering. Engineering has approved this. They have stated that if there's any additional hard surface to be installed, that they would like to see some. Some stormwater numbers come from them. So they'll do that. Their minimum landscaping requirement has been met with the existing landscaping on site per our design review code. They will continue to use the existing entrance off of twenty-three fifty north. Their parking requirement is also already met with the existing parking in place. And they are proposing some screening or some fencing around this area. Just to make it a little less visible. It is already kind of tucked behind all of the buildings and businesses. And there is some natural screening along the north with some trees. Staff has no concerns or issues with this. And so we would recommend approval based on. The conditions and findings outlined in your staff report. Do you have any questions for me?
No. No questions? Okay. One comment, I think on the north, can you put the map back up for just a second? That on the north side of twenty-three fifty north, there's a, a power station, put sub-power substation, I believe, over there.
There is a cell tower.
And then I think that there's probably, is, is that where there's some, uh, central Weber equipment or a, or a pump station as well, or something down in there? I can't remember, but anyway, across, is there? Okay. Thank you. Um, and I, I think that what they're proposing here is, I think that's, that's a good use for it because. Um, it's in an area there where. It's kind of at a dead end. Well, it is at a dead end. I don't foresee that that's. Probably going to go anywhere in the future. I don't know that it can. Um, but regardless, it, uh. It looks, it, it looks like a good area for this kind of a use to me. And I know that there's a lot of contractors and we've been told that many times that are looking for places like this to be able to, uh, have a yard. So. It's my two cents word. Anything else commissioners? Okay. I'll ask for a motion on this item.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Motion that we, uh, for the approval of the steward grow conditional use permit application. This recommendation is conditioned upon all review agency requirements and is subject to the following conditions. No outdoor storage shall be permitted on this parcel, only equipment related to this conditional use permit. Um, this recommendation is based on the following findings contractor equipment storage is permitted as a conditional use within the M one zone.
Very good. I've motioned, we have a second. I, 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 wait a second, stop that for just a second. I've got one question. Tammy, was there a note on this one that we needed, or, or was this on the, on the staff recommendations? Cause I didn't, if there was, I didn't. Cause I didn't, if there was, I didn't make it, but I think this one was pretty much just what was written here, correct?
Correct. Yeah, there were no adjustments.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so now I'll ask for a second to that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Great. Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Andriotti?
Yes.
Commissioner Navel?
Aye.
Commissioner Clontz? Chair votes aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And, hey, so now we'll open up for public comment. For items that were not on the agenda, and it looks like we're going to lose our public, so. All right. Remarks from the planning commissioners?
I got a couple of remarks. Well, I'm, I'm after inflation. Last meeting, there's been training down in. When is that? Oh, sorry. Okay, June, how's this? Okay, what, what were the dates on the training?
September something.
So I know that, I think Rick's brought up a few that you could go to. I know, I think Commissioner Edwards is planning on going to the Utah Land Use Institute training. Which is October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, but I think you might be referring to, like. I think it's Thanksgiving Point, APA Utah.
Correct.
Let me look it up real quick here. I'm actually, I was looking at the homepage of the events, and I'm actually on, I'm actually on the homepage of APA Utah events. There's a picture of me.
Yeah.
If you're just, if you're curious.
Well, we'll put it in front of us here, will we?
Uh, let's see, APA Utah twenty twenty-two Fall Conference, September eighth. Let's see. Sure. Yep, it's September eighth and September ninth in Lehigh.
And then the other one is the land use in October.
Yeah, Land Use Institute at the end of October.
And where, where, where's that one going to be, you know?
It's, I think it's always at the same place. There's a Realtor building. I think, yeah, Realtor building in Sandy.
Okay, okay, very good. All right.
Steve, what was the October what?
Yep, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. It sounds like June will send out a. Invite.
And, and both of these will. Yes, settle or, or stand for the one hour of training we need or whatever every year.
I think it's four, isn't it?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Okay, and then the other thing I wanted to just bring up, I don't know, we, we passed the thing on. Button the group off of the escrow money. What was that Somerset?
Tonight, tonight.
And, and I'm just wondering, you know, we, just about always we see the word escrow these days. And I guess my, my problem is, is I'm just always wondering what happens when the next emergency comes up. And we don't have the money again. And I guess, what, what, what is the plan for that? I mean, we kind of got off on the. Because the homeowners association wanted to take over the property. But the more I think about it is, is to me, I'm not so sure we. I shouldn't have voted to do that. I, I just haven't felt good about it. So I, I guess, how do we safeguard escrow agreements?
Was there, was there something in the motion that, that, uh. I guess for black, a better word undermined, undermined the escrow agreement? Tammy?
No, one of the conditions of approval was that they either install or escrow or a combination of both prior to county commission approval. But it's not Somerset. He's asking about the one that's down there, um, up to twenty-two hundred and below forty-seven.
Yeah, Jack, sorry. Thank you. This is senior moment. So, but you know, a, a, after that, I sat right up in bed that night and thought, you know, Wayne. I wasn't happy with voting for that. And I guess, how do we safeguard escrow agreements? Because, you know, we, we could be going into another time here of buffeting around when things are half done. And how, how do we prevent things like this from happening? Is there a way to do that or less than that?
There is. So this has come up a few times. We've had a few cluster subdivisions that have been approved. And recorded without the developer providing a guarantee for open space improvements. A few of them, I will say, were under an ordinance that didn't actually require that, and I would say it's really just. It is an oversight of the, the planner who worked on those specific projects originally. They should have made sure that that was done. We have not seen this be an issue in, in, in quite a few years. Now, Jaclyn was recorded in twenty fifteen, I believe. And so we are aware of that situation. And it hasn't, in my, my understanding is it hasn't happened since then with open space improvements. It's something that we're, that we're catching, but it is ultimately, it's up, up to the, the planner. And the engineers, they review the cost estimate to make sure we're getting all of the open space. You could, if, if you wanted to, it seems like a reasonable condition. To, to want to look at those things as part of final approval, to say, how much are you providing? And we want to see that you provided that to the county commissioners before they move forward. But, but I think it is something that we are currently catching where we weren't before.
Okay. Wayne, can I add something? In addition, the, the escrow agreement has changed probably since Jacqueline Estates. Because previously, the county bound their own hands, and their only remedy against the developer. Was whatever amount was in that escrow agreement. And we've changed the language of that, so that now the county is not only bound by what is in the escrow agreement. But the county can pursue any legal remedies outside of the escrow agreement that we so choose are necessary for that developer. So that was just poor writing in the original agreement. Which has been changed now, so we are not, our hands are not tied to that degree.
Okay, now I'll be able to sleep on that one. Because I think that, that that puts a little teeth in it. And I, I guess that, you know, I, we, we think about this one tonight, piping the canal. And as time moves on and the developer puts that money in for that pipe. Well, something could come up in two or three years later, the pipes four times more expensive. And so it sounds like to me that if I heard you right, is, is there's a way that they can seek. Legal remedy from the contractor to be able to get the money to do that.
Yeah, if he's in breach of the escrow agreement, then the county can pursue whatever legal remedies. Or methods we need to in order to go after him for that. That's easier said than done, but at least we aren't.
Right.
Bound by just the amount in the escrow.
How do you, how do you determine how much is put in escrow? Do they come up with their own estimates? Do you guys come up with your own estimates? How does that work?
So usually how it works is the developer will propose a, an amount based on industry practices. And as staff, we, often we know what those numbers look like, and we can compare them and determine if they are. If it's an appropriate number. One thing I'll mention as well, Commissioner Andriotti, I think you bring up a good point. There, I think there could be some more teeth in, in these ordinances. One thing that you could do as, as the subdivision ordinance is rewritten, hopefully now that the general plan is coming to an end. You could suggest at, to, to us during these meetings where we're talking about subdivision code changes. Maybe we require that the developer does fully install all of the open space before, before any homes are built. Right now, I think our ordinances are in favor of a developer, or they can build, they can sell homes, sell lots and, and leave. That's something that we could tighten up in our subdivision code for sure.
Appreciate that. And I, I don't care for the way that that Jacqueline Estates ended up either. I'm not sure if there was a better remedy or not. But what I don't like is, is the way that those, those lots ended up being like a. Like a, you know, what, yeah, what's the, what's, what's the, where they bend the, bend the cardboard? What's it called? Sugami, not sugami, whatever it is. Origami, thank you. I mean, that, that is just completely a mess, the way that that ended up, as far as I'm concerned. I have a little bit of remorse on that one myself. There may, may not have been a better remedy, like I stated, but at the same time. I'm not sure that the remedy that, that was, that came to pass was the right remedy, so.
My concern with that one was that we were setting a precedent, which sounds like we've resolved that now. But I was worried that we were setting the precedent that a developer could come in and do something, or promise to do something and then never follow through with it. And then it's like, well, it's just like there was a backdoor loophole into getting out of it, so.
I've got about fourteen more. Do you want me to start?
As long as you're buying dinner after, I don't care.
It's only a quarter to six.
I, thank you. I'll sleep better on that.
Well, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because it, it, it is kind of nice to talk about some things where there was some. Not necessarily contention, but some struggle.
Correct.
And that one had some struggle to it for sure.
Last thing that I have. I, I came in and sat through the presentation on the general plan last night. I thought it was very well received. Think that. That there was a lot of work to educate the public. About lot size, some taxes, and lot size and costs to build. Can't say enough about. How well that plan was put together and rests with the, the planning department here. And. But. I deeply. Impressed with that. I think that we've got a good document, I think, will live a long time. And so just wanted to record. And put that out there, so kudos.
Yeah.
Pass that along.
Yeah, I think that I agree with, with Commissioner Andriotti. It was well received. I think there was somewhere in the vicinity of fifteen people that got up and spoke. Or zoomed in, and there really wasn't anything negative. We had one, one person that asked. You know, a significant amount of questions that. Could have been answered if they had attended any of the meetings, but. Regardless of that, it was good that they attended. I'm not, I'm not trying to knock that down, but it, it went well. I think it. I agree, it is a good plan. I think that due diligence was, was done on that plan and. Yeah, thanks to staff for putting that all together and probably having to put up with Charlie. And sometimes the lack of Charlie, and maybe that's a good thing, I don't know, but anyway. I know it, it took the whole team to get that thing together to, so good job, yes, all around. So anything else?
No.
Okay, uh, Mr. Director?
I think a, a few days after the last planning commission meeting, one of our planners, Scott Perks, put in his, his two weeks. He, he accepted a, an offer with North Logan City as their planning director. So we'll, we'll miss him, but we just want to let you guys know that he's, he's leaving us and. He's a, he's a traitor. I'm just kidding. We'll, we'll miss him.
I was about to ask who it was, because my, because Jared came home and said, one of you guys had gone to, was going up to my phone.
Yeah, yeah, Scott Perks, one of our planners, so.
He, he lives up there, right?
Yeah, he does.
Probably better for him. Very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Legal counsel?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.